All right, good morning. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for February 23rd, 2023. Take a roll call. Mayor Giles is out of town and excused from this meeting, and all other members are here present. So we'll start with item number one. Is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, February 27th meeting. Any council members have any questions on those items? Questions?
Yes. Yeah, let me find it. So we're due. Jim, I just had a quick question for you. So we're... For reference, it's item number nine. We're releasing signatures for the potential annexation of some property that's just north of the airport. I'm still drinking my coffee. I'm gonna get there. I'm gonna wake up. So we had to discuss, there's a couple of cases moving at the same time. I've sat down with Mary Ananda on a portion of this property on the north side. I like the direction that that's headed as far as we're looking at jobs and manufacturing in this area. What I'm concerned about is an overabundance of some other uses that would underutilize this parcel. I want to encourage job creation in manufacturing, not so much an overabundance of storage. I think about the project that was done near AT Still University, where we had some development agreements that worked in a proper balance of the necessary storage and logistics components of it for the manufacturing piece. And we want to see if we can get something like that on this development agreement. And where do you want to put that? In the annexation or the zoning?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Summers. So this is, and I know you know this, but for the public, this is just the release of the petitions, which is sort of a unique sort of process that's for annexation only. And it's not the actual annexation. So when it comes back with the actual annexation, what we'll probably, at that time, is we'll have a rezoning case with it, with the annexation and with the development agreement. And so we'll meet with you regarding that development agreement, and we can look at the development agreement that we used, that you referenced, as sort of a baseline going forward. And we control the timing. So once the release of the petitions, there's a year timeframe in which it can come back to council. And so within that one-year timeframe is what we have.
Yeah, I don't anticipate this is gonna be a year, though, given that Mary's office is working on the development on the north parcel itself, and that this is owned by a single owner. So the release of petition is gonna be for one person to sign, right?
No, it usually comes back very quickly.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Sometimes too quickly for us, in order to manage the development agreement.
Right, so I want to make sure that we're on top of this so that council has the, all the information necessary. And then, Mary, I know that the, we've discussed the southern half-ish of this property doesn't have anything on it. That's the one I'm most concerned about. I like the direction of the north side because there's already plan there. The southern half of this is I have some concerns about. So this is also part of working with the owner and his attorney and a development agreement to get some good uses here.
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, yes, that's correct. We are working on that development agreement right now with the applicant as it relates to not only the portion that's included in the rezoning and the site plan, but also on the portion that right now is not included in that.
Okay. This is a, like I said, the council will be briefed soon. There's some good manufacturing opportunities planned for this area. We still have some challenges in this area, most notably access to the freeways and other development that's gonna happen around here. Hawes Road is not complete. Elliott Road, I think there's some stuff on here for gas and water, or the roadways to improve, but that road is still an undulating flooding mess at times. So this is gonna be a little bit of a challenge with ingress and egress on this piece for a while. Also, you can't get the power road because Warner doesn't bridge the canal. And I know we've had some light discussions on that, but that's gonna take some time. So this is a good opportunity, however, to move forward with something that's gonna create the jobs that we are really envisioning for the gateway area. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think Councilmember Freeman, did you have?
I did. On 4A, the well drilling project, maybe Water, if they're here, they could give me a little overview. I know it's important for our wells. These are new wells, from what I understand. And I'd like to know how they're gonna tie into our distribution system and the scope of the well. Are they well water for the diameter of the pipe and the depth of the proposed well site? And how long does it take, Chris, to drill these wells?
Councilmember Freeman, it'll take several months to do the full drilling process because you're not just drilling the well, but you're taking zonal samples and you're really designing the well casing so that you're pulling water from the parts of the aquifer that you're targeting. So it takes several months to do that. But then you have to design the site, so all the infrastructure, all the mechanical, electrical equipment. You have to order that, and then you have to build it. So I think the full scope of a well drilling project is two to three years.
Is that per well, or?
Right, per well.
Okay. And how does this integrate into our distribution system? Do we have to put infrastructure to tie into that as well?
These two wells in particular, Desert Wells 24 and 25, they'll actually, they'll need to be new piping. We call it collection lines that will tie into the backbone that delivers this water to the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. So this water, the intent is to discharge this water into the reservoir at the Signal Butte Treatment Plant. And we blend or we co-mingle that water with water that's treated through the plant, and then it's pushed out into the distribution system.
Okay. Thanks. And then, the quality of the well water out there, is it pretty good quality? And the depth of the well? I kinda like the analytics of that.
It's pretty good quality. The one constituent that flirts with the threshold would be arsenic. The arsenic MCL is 10 parts per billion. And we usually see numbers that are up in the nine or 10 range, which is okay. Our target is lower. That's why we have a blending program, so we blend into the reservoir. So that's not an issue.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Summers?
Yeah. It's on this item. Same item, because you brought up the arsenic. Where are we on monitoring for PFAS in the water over here?
We're starting a three-year program called UCMR-5. So it's an EPA-required program where, over the next three years...
Sorry, I should, I probably should ask you first to just explain what PFAS is.
Well, there's PFOS and PFAS.
Yeah, PFOS, yeah, and then?
PFAS, polyfluoral alkyl substances. So it's what you're reading about in the media called forever chemicals. And it's, there's a litany of industrial products where this is, I guess, a component. And so PFAS, PFOS, those are the two more notable ones that you see. But there's literally dozens and dozens of these compounds. EPA is still working through the process of setting maximum contaminant levels that we would have to observe. So there's been health advisory limits that have been set, and those have moved around, quite frankly. But they're trying to zero in on an MCL nationally. There's a couple states, one that comes to mind is Pennsylvania. They've actually set an MCL. And I can't remember, I think it's around 20 parts, actually 20 parts per trillion. So that's how minute these particles are. And to put it in perspective, we don't even have the equipment in our lab to test down to parts per trillion for these compounds. So we farm that work out to certified labs in the area, and they help us with that. So we're just going through a three-year process right now to test for these compounds. And we're testing the wells, and we're testing points in the distribution system.
Very good. But, I mean, this is an issue that's really hit Luke Air Force Base with all the continued activity in the water around it. We're not seeing nearly that level, but we're moving toward making sure that the water is safe, that we're doing the testing at the level. But much work to be done.
Right, Councilmember Summers, that's correct. And we're so early in the testing process, we're really just getting started with our program. And we're also doing research on wellhead treatment that we could, we could put into service if needed. There's GAC, there's ion exchange. There's different types of treatment capabilities that we could put into service if we do detect PFAS at a concentration that concerns us and we want to treat for it.
Excellent. But drinking water is safe?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
And Meg, those comment questions, you can help me out. These wells that are out here, kind of in the more recently developed areas, are less susceptible to that. We have other wells that are closer into more industrial areas that we are tracking, where we have, working with the state and ADQ on some wells and providing additional testing wells because there are some areas where that is at a higher elevation that we're also making sure we're on top of. It's not wells on this side of town, it's wells closer into where more development and closer to industry. Is that correct?
That is correct. So you're gonna tend to see some of these compounds in some concentration or another closer to where there was industrial activity, where there was manufacturing that had these compounds present. Firefighting foam is one manufactured product that has these compounds.
Question, Councilmember Spilsbury?
There's a bunch of great stuff for the library here. I was just curious about 4J, the purchase of the mobile library. If this was a new, a new, do we already have a mobile library? Is this a new program?
The council approved this in last year's budget.
Uh huh.
So, Mike, or Paul, sorry, I see Paul. Paul, you could just come up and give an update. We approved this in the last year's budget. It's just, again, it's kind of this, how long it takes to get things ordered and processed. But give us an update.
This was already in the presentation?
We talked about this last year. But just maybe give an update of kind of where we're at.
Okay, sure. Good morning, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury and council. So this is the mobile library that we talked about last year, and it's taken a while to come to fruition. But during the adoption of the budget, from July 1st to now, we've been designing the mobile library. So that's where the stage we're at right now. We have the designs in. At this point, it's releasing it to be built, so...
And what are, is there a schedule for it, or just as needed, or?
Mike might be better.
I know, right.
This is one thing, it's like, you can see the gift in front of you, and you're excited to open it, but you just can't yet. That's how we feel with the mobile library. So what we intend to do with it is, I have mentioned before, is we'll go out into the community, really the under-engaged areas of Mesa. But we want to take this to events, to city events, to schools. And the intention is just to expand our services more broadly so there's less obstacles to receive access to libraries.
And could people ask for it to come out to their area?
You know, let's get it?
Okay, okay, just curious. I'm excited about it.
We haven't quite determined the schedule, but...
Let me know once you figure out all that stuff.
We're starting reservations in.
I know, gosh, I just got excited, so, okay.
We're excited, too.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Where's your vision, Chris?
Well, hopefully on some wheels someday.
Councilmember Duff?
Yes, I just wanted to have a review on item 5C in joining the Southwest pavement technology consortium, and what that looks like.
RJ here, oh, here comes RJ.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, good morning. RJ Ziedler with the Transportation Department. The item that you're asking about is a joint effort headquartered at Arizona State University, where the ASU has a lab, and we would be partnering not only with ASU, but also with industry on trying to develop new pavement technologies that can be used around the city. So what the program will look at is, you know, trying to increase the lifespan, you know, of pavements, but also look at possible environmental components, you know, to pavement where, you know, we could do some different things from an environmental perspective. You know, you'll read a lot right now, perhaps you've read about some of the testing that has been done in Phoenix. They've had some challenges, frankly, with the cool pavement that they've applied. We have a small test section in the parking lot at our building on Sixth Street, and it's not holding up very well. And so we wanted to test it kind of in less visible places before we went out and put it into neighborhoods, only to find out there might be some challenges. But there are at least a dozen industry partners as part of this program, and we're hoping that more cities and agencies join as well. But really, the idea is to look at all aspects of asphalt, and the environmental considerations are part of that.
I'm really thrilled by having that possibility. So beyond cooling, it's the material itself.
Correct.
And finding materials that are more environmentally friendly, as well as, typically, the materials do, they are not locally derived? How do we get pavement, material, asphalt?
Well, it's a combination. It's obviously the aggregate. It's also what's called the binder, which is the petroleum, you know, component that comes from different places in the country. You know, we do one process right now that Mesa has been doing, and this is working with Beth Union and the engineering staff. There's a process we use called Colden Place Recycling on some of our arterial streets where they actually mill the pavement and then recycle it immediately on the spot. We have to add some new pavement as part of that. But there are already some things we're doing, so that's about as local as you can get, you know, where you're milling the pavement and putting it right back down. So, you know, these are the types of things we want to look at. You know, can things be sourced more locally? You know, I think time will show whether or not, you know, that can be done because that certainly is part of the, if you want to call it the big picture carbon footprint. But we're excited. Mesa will be the first city to actually join the consortium in addition to the dozen or so businesses that are already part of it. So we look forward to seeing what comes from this.
Yeah, so I assume the objective is also getting away from the petroleum-based products into something that doesn't emit the CO2?
You know, I'm not the expert on asphalt construction. Getting totally away from petroleum-based products, that certainly is an aspirational goal, but I'm not sure, just being honest, that that's something I see in the near term. So, you know, how do we use asphalt products more effectively, I think is more where we'll be going in the near term.
Okay, I'll look forward to the updates. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? I do have on 5C, or wait, no, that was 5D. The study that we're doing with Tempe around the streetcar extension, maybe Jody, can you explain how that works with the? I know we got a TOD grant, Transit-Oriented Development Grant, and Tempe is also, you know, they started a streetcar. They wish to extend it. I know there's conversation, Prop 400 extension, but how's this work kind of altogether?
Vice Mayor, excellent question. So over the last, we've had this discussion about with Tempe looking at extending their streetcar for probably the last nine to 10 years. And I think it was about four years ago, we'd finished a feasibility study on if that was realistic. And during that timeframe, we referred to this a lot as the Tempe-Mesa streetcar. So we're switching the name now to be the Rio East-Dobson streetcar. That's more in line with how Valley Metro names their extensions. So this study will not commit us to anything other than council identifying this as the corridor we want. Likewise, at the same time, we have going on, last year, we received an FTA grant to do TOD planning in, through the Fiesta District in Mesa. And that, those boundary areas are Dobson, from Rio Solado and Dobson, south to southern, southern over to Country Club, and then Country Club up to Main Street. And that's really planning work. The grant is a project to give our planning department the tools to encourage transit-oriented development in that corridor to support the investment that we would make with the streetcar. So they work very much complementary with each other.
Perfect. And I know, you know, we started the Fiesta Buzz as far as the neighborhood connector. And I know there's been success on having people ride that neighborhood connector. Can you talk a little bit on just the last couple months, maybe?
Sure. The Fiesta Buzz, actually, when we'd finished, when we finished the feasibility study, we also were doing a study looking at extending streetcar into, through the Fiesta District. And one of the recommendations from that study was to implement a circulator-type service to help generate ridership in that corridor. So we launched that in October. Ridership on that route keeps, has grown every month. So we've seen significant increase. And I don't have the last ridership numbers, but it's, it's right now, for the fourth month of service, it's running ridership consistent with what we're seeing on the Downtown Buzz, which is a much more established route. So that bodes very well for the future of the Fiesta Buzz.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to item number two. Presentation and provide direction on the city's housing path to recovery. So we have Ms. Belinky, Erin Raine, Deanna Lopez, welcome.
Good morning, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am Lindsay Belinky, the Deputy Director for Community Services. And we do have Deanna Lopez with us here this morning. She's our Human Services Coordinator in Community Services, as well as Erin Raine, our Mesa Police Detective. We're here today to talk about addressing homelessness in Mesa, how we are doing that, and give you some updates on our progress. So as we start, I also wanted to acknowledge there are many other people right behind us that are doing this work and really contribute significantly to this work. So it is very much a team effort. We are not alone, and we give thanks to all those behind us and all those out in the field doing the work as well. So as we start to talk about how we address homelessness, we do always come back to our strategy, which is our housing path to recovery, as you see here. This is where we focus our efforts. It really keeps us focused in our response, in our investments, and in assessing where are there gaps in these services and these places along our pathway, and how we can make them better. It starts at the emergency phase, where we're meeting people on the street and getting them into a safe temporary shelter. And then gradually adding services, a housing plan, wraparound services, building stability along the way, and helping them eventually get into different types of shelter, transitional housing, and then rental assistance, and hopefully ultimately back to independence. This plan also, as I mentioned, really guides our investments. So in the last two years, we have had 79% of our federal funding allocations that have been put back into the community for homeless and crisis services, which is approximately $11.3 million, and serving about 81,000 people. And we also have programs you're familiar with, our ERAP, Emergency Rental Housing Program, and our ARPA dollars that we dedicate to this housing path to recovery with the Helemann House, Transitional Housing Units through that program, as well as East Valley Men's Center and programs like Off the Streets. We have many different roles with the one purpose of addressing homelessness. So you can see here all of our different roles. We really do have a seat at the regional table. So that starts with, or includes the great work that Mayor Giles has done with other mayors and with MAG on the pathways home regional strategy. We also have a seat at the table with MAG around the Management Committee and Continuum of Care Board. And we participate in sharing best practices and strategizing with other cities. An example of this is creating a community court toolkit that Mesa created to share with other cities so that they can model, create their own model of our great program that we have here in Mesa. Locally, we focus on our strategy. City leadership is very involved in that and investments. And then human services, public safety. And housing is where we see a lot of the direct impact and where we house our homeless programs and our response to the community, our housing vouchers, and things of that nature. We also have an interdepartmental team. So showcased here are all the different departments that meet on a monthly basis. We call it our Homeless Strategy Team. And this team really works to reduce silos in serving the Mesa community. We share a lot of resources, we problem-solve issues together, and have seen a lot of great success in just working together. One example of this is when the Housing Choice Voucher waitlist opened, we had Mary working with her team on that, obviously. Through this, these team meetings, we had the Parks Team say, the Park Rangers say, you know, we can be trained in this, and we can take our iPads out to parks and help people sign up. So that's one of our success stories out of this. And there's many others that we see great value as we work together in this collaboration. So now we're getting to the juicy details, and a nice update we'd like to share with you. We are really excited. We've been doing a lot of work around collecting data. And I wanted to be sure to give a shout out to Evan Allred and Nick Labella. They're here today. They've really done a great job of collecting all of this data, digesting it, helping to work with our partners to clean it up where it didn't make sense and there were gaps, and continue to really be an advocate for getting more data to really show how is, how is homelessness showing up in Mesa? And then how are we doing in providing services? So this data reflects, is from many different sources, which we'll talk about in a minute here. And it is, it's a work in progress, but we're really, really excited to show you what we have here today. And we continue to advocate for more data from the Maricopa County Association of Governments and other sources, too. So I'm gonna hand it over to Erin to talk about the data sets, as well as some key takeaways.
Perfect. Good morning, Vice Mayor, council. Good to be back in the hot seat again, I suppose. So HMIS is a, just, I'll give a brief description of what that is. That's the Homeless Management Information System. And that's a HUD database that all service providers and the continuum of care use to connect people to homelessness. It could be done by outreach workers, it could be done by health professionals. So the data coming in comes in from multiple sources. And many times, the data collection happens in the field. And what ends up happening is, once the QOD assessment's done, you can see what options are available for this person so you can make that service connection. And so we get a lot of our data from HMIS. It's a statewide database run through Solari. And this is the MAG Quarterly Report. This is an excerpt from the MAG Quarterly Report, basically showing the regional trends on households entering homelessness. And you can see that the singles and the adults, or families are tracked separately. So you can see our big rise there in the summer was, we'd never seen a rise that big at MAG for that much homelessness, or households entering homelessness. And so you have a total of 5,600, and it looks like that increased by 9%. And then families increased by additional, or decreased slightly, but then adults, you had an 11% increase on single adults. More people to continue to experience homelessness. And so overall, there was a 51% new increase in first-time homelessness. People had never experienced homelessness, entering homelessness for the first time over the last two years. We're also working with MAG, they do this quarterly screenshot, or this snapshot. We're working with MAG to get the same thing with our city details so we can kind of see how those align, what our city results align with the regional results, and so we can adjust our programming effectively. So if we can go to the next slide. Yep, certainly.
Right again. So those figures, are those individuals served? Is that a point in time?
Good question.
I mean, how, where are they derived?
So those are inputs each month by the outreach workers or anybody who has access to HMIS. These are unique persons who are entering homelessness, and that's how it's tracked.
So these are people that have been contacted or served in some way?
Seeking services, yes, that's correct.
So it doesn't take into account the many that?
That's correct. These are people that are actively seeking services. So the ones that are not seeking services will not be captured in this data.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
I have a question on that. And this says, this is a county-wide statistic, correct?
That's correct.
This is not the Mesa?
That's correct.
Which we're going to next.
Well, we're, we're hoping to get this exact extrapolation from, from MAG, and we're working with them on that for just city data.
Okay.
When you say that, Erin, you mean, so if there is a nonprofit or someone who's intaking in Mesa, then we would have that information?
Absolutely.
That doesn't necessarily mean, and the challenge is, because sometimes that intake of someone who's in Mesa does not necessarily mean they're from Mesa. Just means they were in Mesa.
And they were contacted.
And then, one of the questions that will be asked is where they, where they entered homelessness from. And so that's tracked as well. So we'll get into that data in, in a minute. You'll be able to see where the homelessness started, and then go from there.
Thank you.
Certainly. So when it looks to, this is, this is basically contrasting census data versus HMIS data. And so when you look at it, we're, the blue bar would be what our, our census data population is, and then the, the yellow or the gold would be the HMIS inputs. And one thing that you can notice right away is that our persons of color are overrepresented in it, as it comes to homelessness. And so you'll see that particularly African-American and Native American populations are overrepresented. If there is a silver lining in this, it's later in the data, we'll, we'll, we'll show you, it's that we're doing a really good job of getting those persons connected to services, and interventions on those connections are even higher. For example, at our Off the Streets program, almost 24% of the people served there are African-American, and they have an 80% positive exit rate. And Native Americans have a 79% positive exit rates, and whites would have a 72% positive exit rate. So we're doing a good job of meeting our, our, our particular population's needs. But you can see that we have a struggle in, in our community, and this is, this is how the, the data helps us adjust that programming to meet the needs of the people.
That's a good question. And then, I'm assuming, you know, census breaks down Latino, Hispanic, under white, right?
It would be subcategorized, yeah, but.
So it's subcategorized ethnicity?
It's currently not.
It's not, okay.
In that, in this assessment.
So with that data, it's Hispanic, Latino, if you're that, you're in the white section, right, as far as race?
I'm sorry?
If you're, currently, it would be under the white section, under race.
That's correct. That's correct.
That was my question.
It's breaks, it's broken down by, in the census, yep.
And we, we do have more data. The forward-facing page is, is very generic. There's a lot of data that we can drill down into and really fine-tune our programming through that.
Okay. I just say, you know, if, like, if somebody was looking at, is, there's no Hispanic, Latino, they're homeless, like, that's, that's something that I think we just need to capture.
Yes.
At, at some level, right, so?
Good point, Vice Mayor.
Yep.
Erin, I have another question on the numbers, just to understand the data that we've gathered. So of nearly 5,000 Mesa residents that received homelessness since in 2022. So that's an annual figure, 2022. And then, and the previous screen that we just talked about on the county.
Yeah.
How does that differentiate? Because that total is, you know, around 6,000, and this is 5,000 in just Mesa, so I'm just trying to differentiate.
That's the annual count for Mesa, and that's a monthly count regionally.
Do you see the difference? The first slide?
Okay, I see.
So that, that's per month.
I need to put on my thinking cap this morning.
Households entering homelessness.
I'll find it.
Our 5,000 is totally here.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And those, those can be, those are unique contacts in this context. These are unique persons engaged and seeking services.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Haridi, excuse me. And so we are showing you some slides that are showcasing the snapshot that we have from the live page. When you go to the live page, we do have services broken down by ethnicity. And so the Hispanic population is showcased in that data set, which is not represented here today, but it is on our snapshot.
Okay, so this one's pretty interesting, by gender. You can see we're almost, almost 50/50. Regionally, we're about the same, but nationally, it's 70/30. 70 male, 30% female. So we're really looking into why we're seeing this, this breakdown in our region, and particularly in our city, having so many more females overrepresented in homelessness. So that, that's another good reason why, seeing this data real time and having an update all the time helps us adjust that. And so we actually have made changes, and, and you can see the, the outcomes reflected in our, particularly in the Off the Streets program, with the female participation in that. So it just shows, highlights more vulnerability in our community.
Since we're just asking questions along the way, we have like the East Valley Men's Shelter that's just for men. So do we have facilities that are just for single women?
That's something that we, we have discussions about expanding. We do have domestic violence shelters. We do have some other shelters for women. Forget the name of it right now. But some programming, but not enough. We, we are looking at ways to expand that, that footprint so that we can meet that need.
Would they be housed or emergency sheltered with families then versus with men? Or how does that work?
So there's not a shelter that serves women specifically in Mesa. The IHEL program is dedicated to serving women. And then at, at different shelters, so like at Off the Streets, we, we serve single women.
In a non-congregate setting.
Or women with families.
Currently, females in our shelter programs are in a non-congregate setting.
Non-congregate.
So not a dormitory, if you will.
Yes, okay.
And so we're trying to bring up some of those options, just to add more layers to the, to the service.
Okay.
It does seem to be a gap that needs to be filled.
Indeed.
Just a quick question on the, so the 47%, do you know, is that, did you say, is that single females? Or does that also include, it could be a family?
It's absolutely part of families as well.
Okay.
So this data shows us that homelessness is no respecter of age. You can see, particularly at the ends, our, our younger population and our older population, how, how represented they are. And actually, it's been increasing on, on the higher end. Age has been, our median age in our shelter services has been going up and up and up, as, over the last couple of years. And we'll, we'll have more of that data soon. But it just shows our, the need for us to adjust our programming to meet the needs of our community. And this, this is the data that helps us do that. But you can see, the 0 to 17, the children experiencing homelessness, it's a, it's a remarkable number. And so these are, these are the HMIS numbers, right? So these are what persons who, who disclose this information say, I became homelessness in Mesa. These are the numbers for that.
Councilmember Spillsbury?
So then is the female male chart pick up that possibly too? That maybe there's a lot of kids that are female?
There is a breakdown, and.
We have the breakdown for the Off the Streets program.
Right.
I'm just wondering if that possibly is an explanation for why the female number's so high. I don't know.
Yeah, and, and remember, this is what I, the hesitation, remember, these are the only individuals who are seeking help.
Right.
If you, I think if we were to talk to those who were out on the streets, the demographics would be very different than what you see for those.
Right, because a family with kids is going to be more likely.
Right, but what you visually see and what are actual homeless.
Right.
I said that, I would submit that those demographics are going to be quite different than the ones that are actually seeking for help.
Absolutely.
I would agree with that.
But your comparison to the national is?
The same.
The same, right? Yeah.
That, that's based on the point in time count. And so that, that, that's, it's not exact.
Oh, that's not service.
Not people asking for service. So that's not really a good comparison, right?
Exactly. It's, it's not an exact comparison.
Yeah.
But it's the data we have.
Okay.
And so we're using this data to, to adapt.
So, and because we have to focus on those who want to be helped first. But when you, the anecdotal data, right, that you see probably doesn't match up with what those are getting helped. But right now, that's all we're focused on, willing, those are willing to be served. And so that's kind of, we have, we take the programming and make it work, try to make it work for that group. But it doesn't necessarily mean it's not even close to the total population that's out there.
Reiterating that point, though, so that we just keep in mind what numbers we're talking about here.
But the, the PIT numbers for the region were similar to this. So the, the, the overall numbers are, are very similar to that, that 50/50-ish regionally, which our region, and that's what, the region is, is looking into this. MAG and everybody else is looking into this, and the local, our community partners, because this is disparate from the regional, the, the national number.
Councilmember Summers?
I just want to take a slight step backwards, based on a comment Mr. Brady made. What are we defining here as, as homeless? Are these people homeless in shelters, homeless in public housing? I know there's a slide coming up that homeless in contact in parks. So these, these folks are hitting, are getting services, but there's another population of homeless. So with, what we're looking at, what are we defining as the homeless individual?
So good question, Councilmember Summers. This, this is including everybody who's seeking services through the Continuum of Care, and is logged into HMIS. Our Mesa-specific programming data will come a little later, but this is people on the verge of homelessness, people that are homeless, people that are chronically homeless, first-time homeless. It's, it's a spectrum on, on these particular HMIS data.
Okay, so could one of the homeless in, in these counts be in the shelters or in one of our, or are they out on the street completely?
The point in time count is done so that the, the shelter population is counted separately from the outside. So that's why we have to do it early in the morning, and then before they release people from the shelter. So they count them in the shelter, and then we count who's on the street at that time. So they're, they're counted separately.
Okay. So, and they're both in here, or?
It is inclusive, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So when it comes to veterans, you can see the, the census population's about 8%, but who we're serving out of homelessness is about 6%. Some of that comes from a very robust homelessness reduction program in the veteran community. There's programs like Housing Our Heroes, Function, Built for Zero, which is a, a veteran-specific program that tries to develop a functional zero, meaning the amount of veterans entering homelessness is roughly the amount of veterans that are exiting homelessness in a positive manner. So building that functional zero system. So what we, what we do is we look at what's been working in these veteran-specific programs, and try and apply as much of that to our general population programs. It, it's just, there's been a lot of more opportunity for housing and for other programming for veterans in the past. And that's why we're seeing that, that, that lower number of, of engagement.
Councilmember Summers?
Yeah, this, this is a good program. On the non-veteran side, I think we have community courts as well.
Indeed.
That'll do that. So how successful have these programs been in keeping people off the street versus the recidivism rates? The repeat rates?
Right. So we'll have some data on community court. They're, they're in the process of building this, this whole data portal like we have for, for the homelessness currently. We do track returns to homelessness regionally, and it's usually about 8 or 9% is what the regional number is. And we're, we're applying that. We're seeing a little bit lower than that currently in our programming. So that's kind of the, the general standard, is 8 or 9%.
Okay.
As far as.
The general standard, or is there a target goal? Because getting off the street, depending on the reason.
Zero is the goal.
Yeah, that would be the goal. But realistically, trying to get, move people off the street, one, holding people accountable for, for their own health and wellbeing. And two, providing them with the resources, because, you know, for example, getting, getting off drugs and alcohol can be extraordinarily difficult.
Indeed.
We've seen many anecdotes about how many times people relapse. So there's going to be a relapse rate. But I, I just want to know how we, and it may be, not going to have to answer it here perhaps, but how these courts, both the veteran services and the community services, are attaching people to the right services, what our recidivism rate is, and how we're holding people accountable for their own actions. Does that make sense?
It does. And I, I think the courts could probably speak more specifically to that. But what they are working on, obviously, with community court, we've seen a reduction in recidivism with our chronically homeless population, because one of the aspects, as you know, is layering in additional services and helping them transition. So you layer in the services like, like navigation and housing throughout the streets, and all of a sudden, it just gets, you get a, a far better yield with, with, with that, when you're, when you're layering all that together. So our recidivism is going down in those cases, where we're able, we're able to engage them. But not everybody's at a point where they're willing to engage. And that's where having that leverage of, of the community court becomes very beneficial.
Yeah, and where accountability and holding people accountable.
Indeed, absolutely. And we'll, we'll get into some of that accountability data, will, will, will be in the next few slides.
Great, thank you.
So this is a data from the police department's proactive, internally, we would call it the HOP, or the Homeless Outreach Program or Project. And this is where Lieutenant Diana Williams has a squad of officers that come in two to three days a week, and they go out and they specifically follow the model of outreach, educate, and then enforce. And they go out and they contact as many persons experiencing homelessness and outreach them, try and get them to connect the services. If they're in a violation situation, they try and get voluntary compliance. If they're not able to gain that, then they can, they can do a judicial involvement, which will be a site, lease, or a, a custodial arrest. And so this is what the contacts look like from February of '21, going through, you can see the summer months, there's always spikes in our, in our contacts, as well as enforcement. Yes, sir? You got a question?
No.
Councilmember Berry?
Yeah.
Loaded for bear, all right. So this is.
On that one, sorry.
Yes.
I do. I didn't know you were done with that slide. So I do see the giant spike in the summer month, but there is not one in the previous summer. So heat wouldn't necessarily explain that if there wasn't one in the previous summer. So what else would?
Kind of is, if, if you see in August, August of '21, there's a pretty, pretty big number, and then it goes back again in May.
I'm looking at the human service acceptance, so people who are willing to accept it. There's really no spike until summer of 2022. And I just wondered if you guys had a reason for that.
Well, I think environment drives people indoors. Are they more willing to accept services when, when the conditions are awful outside?
Right. So, but there's no spike in the previous summer. So you'd think if it was a heat-related spike, there would have also been one in 2021.
I think some of that comes to service availability as well.
Okay.
Beds and, and ability to, to put, put beds in beds.
Okay. I mean, because that's a huge, huge spike.
I'll, I'll just add a comment on that, just an opinion, and it's no data, but in '22, rents and home prices went up 30%. And I know a lot of people were evicted and affected greatly, as we saw yesterday. If you're on a lower threshold and things go bad, you.
Fall off the ladder.
Yeah, and that 30% can push a lot of people.
Well, that's kind of what I was wondering, if we had any data to back up why the spike, right? Like, if it was an increase in homelessness or rent, or, you know, I don't, I don't know. We don't have.
Yeah, let's take the data for what it is.
Okay.
You know, the resources, the resources that are dedicated to go do the contacts may not always be consistent, the time we do it. It's just showing an effort as much as anything, and that the opportunity, and like, and like we're saying, is when, maybe we were out there making contacts in the previous years, I don't know whether we were also discussing the opportunity for other shelter opportunities or whatever. So I, I would be careful not to drive too much, because I don't know how consistent, you know, the, you know, when you're trying to take data and really extrapolate some kind of trend out of it, you want to be sure you're very consistent in how you gather the data, how you collect the data. And I don't know, we, we can say we make, we're making a lot of effort, but I don't know how consistent and what information we have available for each time. But it's, it's a, I think if nothing else, this has showed an effort that we're trying to make in scheduling and having PD, and you're going to see other contacts, because we think that's something that's very important for us to be proactive in that regard, where we're not just the officers around the street every day, but also having a dedicated group that's out there specifically contacting homeless. And that's what we're trying to show, is the effort, because we feel like if we can make that contact, get to know the population, then we have a better chance of offering some kind of assistance, or at least getting to know who they are.
And, and I absolutely appreciate the, the thought that this is showing effort, because we all know there's massive effort happening in the city. I just think if we're going to say we're using data for something, then we should look at the data and explain what that data means.
Yes.
Or let's not show the slide if we can't explain.
So Vice Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, so what everybody has said is accurate at this point. We need to take the data for what it is. But one of the things that, that we do do is we look at it and we say, what is this, what is this telling us? And one of, and so what I would say is there are several factors that are at play here. And one of them does have to do with what Councilmember Duff said about, there were a lot of evictions during this time, and there were new homeless, and so there were. And so there were probably more people that were ready and more eager to take services. But the other thing is, is that our police department is just getting better at this. So over time, they have continued to find ways to make their outreach and their proactive response even better. So this homeless outreach project that Aaron talked about has really gotten stronger during this time period. And so I also think this spike is very dedicated or like related to that particular activity. So I think that's what you're seeing here is that they're just getting better at what they do and they're being able, and they're getting better at getting people to really accept service. So the system is getting better overall, and that's what I would say is what you're looking at here.
I mean, it's a roughly 500 person spike in April, May, 2022.
But it's just one time though, so.
Right, exactly. I just want to know why, that's all.
I don't know that we can tell you with statistical-
There's factors.
Anecdotally, there's, there's, there's a few inputs. You have first time homelessness spikes around the same time. And then you also have this ramping up of the second portion of the HOP that hadn't got to yet, which is the homeless outreach source, homeless outreach program resource days, where it's a day where it's an expanded version from the police department, where they bring in a lot of community partners and they go out and they target particular areas and get as many people contacted. So we'll have 10, 15 navigators, we'll have mat services, we'll have all these services available to them on those days. And so that's when we started to ramp that program back up. And so that's probably why you're seeing that spike as well as people being more receptive to services based on first, the spike in first time homelessness.
Okay.
Just every data point collection is not consistent with the previous one. That's my point. You can't say that if you're out there with a bunch of other nonprofits asking the question, you do that once and you don't do it the other dozen times. You have to be really careful about extrapolating the conclusions to the data, how it compares. It compares in that day that when you had all those resources and had all those services to offer. It makes a difference. But is that available every month that we've done it throughout the course of this collection?
Very degrees of support.
Yeah, so that's all I'm trying to say.
And some of these numbers, it's important to note, some of these are duplicative contacts. They're not unique contacts. And then, so this shows the, the results from that same date range. It shows how many people were, had a judicial solution or, and how many people had a service solution. So it shows that we are leading with services because you can see how many on the service side were offered services versus how many people are actually arrested. But when, 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 when activity or behavior is egregious and, and needs to be dealt with, it gets dealt with through a judicial solution. And many of those will end up in community court. In the community court, they'll be leveraged to engage in services to improve their behavior. It's also important to note that this, these, those, uh, those contacts are the proactive ones of the HOP program. The police department has also through just reactive contacts, you have out of roughly 51,000 calls or incidents reported, about 4,591 were tagged as homelessness related. So a little less than 10% and about 11,000 people contacted in those, in those contacts. So you have the homeless outreach project that the police department's doing on targeted days and then the resource days and then their, their normal business as usual, their contact, they're having over 4,000 homelessness related contacts. And that's likely underreported because it's having to remember to tag it as homelessness related. So there's probably more than that, but that's a, it's a good number to start with. Any questions on that before we move on? So then, now we have the proactive contacts by the parks and the park rangers. And you can see these are also duplicative as well. And so there's many people that are contacted a dozen times in a month. And then when they're, when they're engaged in misconduct, they're cited or arrested. And again, into community court and then they're offered services to, to, to work towards rehabilitation. And let's see. Again, those are, are duplicative, so we can go to the next one now. This one will probably be not a surprise for many people. This is the breakdown of which parks have the most.
Got a question here.
Sorry, can I turn on?
Councilmember Spilsbury?
Is there arrests not show up on that slide? Or is there just, whoa, someone turned to mine. And so I just can't see a green, it's just the same as the gray. So it's like zero or barely above zero.
Yeah, they, they tend to not have as much criminal citations due to their nature. So their citations will be for, usually for city code violations, non-criminal offenses.
That are in the park.
That are in the park.
Okay, thanks.
So this is a breakdown of where those park rangers contacts were. And no surprise, climate and pioneer are, are, are top parks here.
So question on this detective, so what are we doing as far as, especially climate and pioneer parks? As far as, I know there's concerted efforts being done in these parks. This data is duplicative, right? So there's probably some people that have multiple contacts over a day or, you know, over the week. And so is there strategies that we're looking at, especially in these two parks? That I know I've had many concerned residents and especially on climate where, you know, they've taken over Ramadas and unfortunate, I know we have a police trailer as far as a camera. Let's talk about adding additional cameras potentially. But what, what strategies are being done in these two parks specifically?
Good morning, Commander Mike Beaton, the Central District Commander. Good morning, Vice Mayor and council members. I'll help out Detective Rain, I'm kind of more over the enforcement side of this. So parks are a priority for us a hundred percent. So especially Pioneer in my district, climate down in Fiesta. So some of the stuff we're doing, cameras, thank you very much for getting, approving the cameras for us. That's a huge help. That's something we can look at 24/7 and record and go back and see any crimes going on. And the stuff we're doing there are day shift. We've got our, just our patrol officers focused. They go and hit the parks every day when they go available in the mornings. Our bikes, central bike unit goes to Pioneer and focuses on them. And the Fiesta has officers, they don't have a bike unit, they have officers that are bike trained and they go there as well. So, and then we're having these, we've got, we've talked about the homeless outreach program, the HOP program. We've also got other smaller programs that are more, homeless outreach is more focused on providing resources. We've got smaller programs that are kind of more acutely and they're more focused on enforcement. So quarterly, we've got officers that'll go out and do nothing but hit the parks, hit the areas where homeless are. And if they're committing crimes, we will handle that. So there's a bunch, it's a multifaceted approach and that seems to be the best way to do. And we've kind of narrowed this down and focused it more in 2022, which is probably part of that spike that you're seeing as well. We're getting better at what we're doing.
And then Councilman, Vice Fairhead, you and I have talked about this and we're working on a proposal to bring forward to the council where we have cameras, but they're limited scope. So we are, the police department and the parks department are working on proposals, and specifically in these two parks, to install more permanent cameras in the parks to have eyes on. And then have that feed go into the real time crime center.
Sure.
And then probably have someone from the park rangers group actually be not, not 24/7, but have somebody in the real time crime center who's watching, kind of monitoring those cameras specifically. The only caution I give council, this is, I think it's sometimes difficult, the perception. And, you know, Mike mentioned it, we'll do something if there's criminal activity by homeless. But being homeless in a park is not a crime. Yet, when they're made contact, they can still be made homeless. But that doesn't, the contact of someone who is unsheltered in a park isn't going to eliminate the homeless person being in the park. If they're doing some, if there's some illegal activity taking place, certainly we will, or camping overnight. But otherwise, hanging out of the shelter in the middle of the day with all your stuff is not a crime. And I think that's, that's part of the perception and the reality that we have to deal with sometimes.
Sure.
Just, but I would assume you're, you're allocating more resources and cameras in particular because there is, there is more criminal activity in these areas, probably associated with the homeless population, right? I mean, it's not just, you're not putting, sorry, you're not putting in cameras just to monitor.
Well, we're doing it for-
Population, I mean, there's probably a higher activity.
For to allow the, those who are coming to the park to feel safe. To know, because we can't always have a park ranger in the park all the time. And this helps us to just amplify our, our ability to respond if there's illegal activity taking place.
Okay.
Correct. And I, I think we understand the, the balance that we have to take on, on this. And I, I do think cameras help on just the, the perception of, of making sure people feel safe in, in the park. But as Mr. Brady mentioned, you know, just hanging out at the park doesn't mean that you're, you're committing a crime. So you, there's a, a balance there that we have to take. And I think adding these types of strategies will help us balance kind of what both our residents and folks are experiencing homelessness, how they can receive services and allows to, uh, have an opportunity to help the public, right? So I think it's, it, it's a challenging, you know, issue. And I think all strategies are, are needing to be provided, so.
Councilmember Spilsbury?
I was just going to ask, like, we have data to show that the cameras deter crime?
What I've told, and maybe Mike, is what happens, it moves people on other sides of the park.
Oh, just to an area that-
It probably deters it for the area in which it's available. I don't know, Mike, what's your experience?
It has deterred, it has caught, it, you know, we have people watching this and they will see a crime occur and call officers in and, and that word quickly gets around that, hey, if the camera's there, you're not going to commit crime there. But then also we move them, we don't just let them sit there, we'll move them around the park. And so, yeah, it, it makes committing crime in the park more difficult, which is what we want. We want, we don't want it to be easy just to, and so that's what we're doing, so.
Okay.
And so it definitely works.
And then I know, it looks like all of these parks are all on the west side, which would make sense. But since we have seen kind of a spread of homeless over to like Power Main area, is Jefferson Park, like none of those parks are getting any hits?
They have cameras as well. Each district has two cameras, so eight cameras total.
I just mean as far as this graph goes.
I think these are just on a magnitude, those are much higher.
Like, so could, there would be some other parks on here with maybe under 300 contacts and just didn't make the pie?
Maybe, maybe.
Something like that, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely, yeah, we are, we are looking at the entire city, not just the west. The west side is just more condensed, we get more conflict.
More resource and services, yeah, okay.
Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, thank you. As I listen to this, I, I think it's so unfortunate that we have to put technology in our parks to make people feel safe. And there again, to be safe, we have the technology to use that with. My question is, is how's our ordinances? We just recently strengthened our ordinances this past year. How are they doing for patrol and park rangers as far as, use the word enforcement, but you know, for citations and arrests? Is there any changes that might need to be done in the future for keeping our parks safer?
None, but I've seen one thing that we've done is we've worked more hand in hand with the park rangers. We've had meetings and we're working with them, especially our bike unit. And we've allowed, so there's certain ordinances that typically only the park rangers have enforced. We've allowed our bike officers to use those as well. Like we're allowed to trespass, if you've committed multiple criminal offenses in the park, we can trespass you for up to 30 days in the park just on the word of the park rangers or the bike officers. And we're allowing them to move forward with that. And we'll let other officers know, hey, this person's trespassed, he can't be in the park from this state to this state. So employing some of the current ordinances is working as well. So I haven't heard of any that we need to tweak at this point.
Okay.
And just to duck down to that, Councilmember Freeman, in that homeless strategy committee, this is where all the, the department heads work together. You also start layering in, the court is working on this as well. So people's release conditions, if they've committed a crime in the park, their release conditions are such that they're not allowed to go to the park or they can be arrested for going back to the park. So they're working, the court is working with the system on, on this continuum to try and mitigate that, that misconduct in the parks.
Very good, I think the collaboration, you know, the park rangers, they're, you know, patrolling the park every day. And I've spoken to them, they're, they're very engaged. And then to have the ability to call a sworn officer in to assist is, is critical. So when I looked at slide 15, I wondered why the arrests and citations were so, I mean, they were pretty flat. And now I understand why, they don't have a lot of authority as a sworn officer to arrest or cite. They can do the minimal sites. But then, you know, getting individuals wrapped around in services through community court or through arrest or through our jail system to help them become self-reliant, I think is critical. So with that, I'm done with my comments, if you want to move forward.
Councilmember Duff?
What's the feeding, what they're saying? Part of my frustration is that we have shelters that require the people to exit during the day. And so I, I assume, you know, then we get a lot more people on this who are receiving, have shelter, but they're not allowed to stay during the day. And so they have to exit onto the streets, parks, wherever, right? They can't stay in the shelter during the day. Can we house people throughout the day who have sought services?
You know, Vice Mayor, it's a great question, I know it's a great concern. I think it's a capacity issue, right? It's, I, part of it is that, as we've talked even internally about our role in that with even those who stay in the hotels, right, is trying to be, make that a productive time during the day, whether it's going and getting assistance, whatever it might be, just whether it's addictive recovery assistance, mental behavior resistance, whatever it might, they need, is having that kind of a program, helping them find jobs. But I know there's some nonprofits that, you know, the men's shelter has a lot of clients there. And I don't know, I know they have a policy, I think that they kind of clear the campus out during the day. And I think we've talked about that and trying to encourage them to have programs, activities so that, like you're suggesting, they're not wandering around the city. I think that's just a matter of trying to keep, keep working harder at creating that, that support and activity so that there's things for individuals to do during the day, right? Whether it's going and getting help or whether, uh, medical help or mental health or jobs. But, and, and I think it's just trying to work with everybody to find those opportunities. Now, can we force somebody to do that? I, I don't know, now maybe it's a condition of staying overnight, I don't know. But I know we've been having these conversations, I don't know that we have that solution right now, so.
In, in my experience, the, the, many times I've been to East Valley Men's Shelter during the daytime, there's 30, 40 men there that aren't being forced out. And I don't know that anybody's being forced out per se, but they're certainly allowed to leave and go job search and, and engage in services like Mr. Brady said. So it's, it's, it's something to work into our mix of, in our continuum to try and provide more.
So they're not required to leave?
Not everybody's required to leave, that's correct.
Okay.
But we, we, yeah.
So it's important to note that a lot of the criminal activity that gets cited in, in the parks and regarding this is all done through community court. The vast majority goes to community court. And as you know, there was a, during the shutdown, community court basically came to a halt and then it ramped back up. And so they're really engaging and, and, and even doing even better than they have in the past. Since, since they've reopened, they've got over 300 arrests currently. What's interesting though is there's been a shift in the landscape from, since the pandemic. And that is there's significantly more fentanyl related cases. And it's important to create a distinction between fentanyl and, and opiates in general. So, because the compounds are changing so fast that what may have been called fentanyl last month may not be called fentanyl in the future, but opioids in general under that spectrum. So over 50% of the cases on a very conservative estimate or measurement in community court are, have some sort of fentanyl related to it. It's probably much higher than that. And that's, it's because they're only tracking the ones that the police reports specifically say the word fentanyl in it. And so the ones that are related to it are probably significantly higher. So the court has been, is, is working on, on, on new metrics, new measures to try and get the overall umbrella of opiates measured so we can better determine how to develop programming for that and as well as docket specific for that. So we can kind of, they're looking at options on, on how to expand and do the best response to the city as possible. Particularly, we're looking at, at opioid settlement dollars, how we can move forward. So utilizing the data that is currently existing in the court to try and mitigate that. The, to say that the, the fentanyl related or opioid related cases and contacts and homelessness and misconduct is exponential is not hyperbolic, it is actual, the, the amount of cases that are, are involved with this. You look at the amount of deaths and overdoses or, we need to look at more as a medical poisoning because that's really what's happening, they're almost all unintentional overdoses. So that is a critical component of what the court is working on as well right now. So with that, we'll, we'll move on to one of the Mesa-specific programs, which is Off the Streets. And this is, this is a mix of HMI-S and Community Bridges data. And so it's important to note that this data is basically from June of 2020, when we initially started. So since June of 2020, you can see that we've served, coming up on 1,400 people. The average length of stay is about 70, 70 days. Some will be there more, some will be there less. Regionally, the length of stay in shelters is 97 days is the goal for the region. So we're good there. You look at our positive exit rate, 74%, that's an exceptionally high rate. When you look at HUD did a study of shelters from 2015 to 2021, and the average for that five-year period was 39.9% positive exit rate. So what we're doing here is exceptional. You look at the amount of females that are, that are in here, it matches our population, so we're doing a good job of getting those persons connected to services. Our demographic by race is showing that we're doing a good job of getting people connected to services. The truly remarkable thing here is the number of people with disabilities. The number of people with physical, the number of people with multiple disabilities. When you start doing two and sometimes three disabilities per person, it significantly changes the, the amount of effort needed to transition this person out of homelessness. So it's, it's quite remarkable to see that the city's been able to get these many, this many people connected to services. And as I said earlier, median age is 45 currently. And that's up from, over the last two years that we've been doing it. And it seems to continue to go up as we're getting more and more people over the age of 62 into our shelter. Early on, it was a much lower population, but it just seems to be increasing. It kind of feels like I'm the one up here bragging about this, but in reality, it's a whole bunch of people, like park rangers, patrol officers, that have done amazing work. And particularly Community Bridges, their case management doing this heavy lifting.
Councilmember Spillsbury.
And I, I'm sorry if you said this, this is represents, since the Off the Street program started.
Yeah, that's correct, June of 2020.
June of 2020.
To current.
So about two and a half years.
Yeah, February 2, to the 6th up there, so.
Okay, so this represents total numbers.
Total numbers.
Detective, is this, you know, it seems, as you mentioned, there's, there, it is a successful program. Is this scalable as far as how, you know, of course, folks need to want to get assistance, right? So are we, you know, this strategy is, is working? So I'm trying to, just trying to see if this is a scalable program that, like, by us investing more, would we reach more? Or are we capping off to, like, the folks that just are, are there that actually want services? And there's no more folks that we can reach? So do you have any, either anecdotal or information on that? That if we need to scale this program, let's look at how we scale? Because you're mentioning, you know, nationwide is 35% or 37%? And we're at a 70%, 70%? That is, that is a program that is highly successful, right, for this specific population? So I'm trying to see, like, is this, do we, is it an issue of scalability to even reach more?
Fantastic question. And I think when you're looking at scale on this system, it's not just this you need to look at. So how long do we want to have, this is the tip of the funnel when we're getting people into the system. And so do we want to have more of this? But reality is we probably need more transitional housing for more, more places after this. So this is like the volume we can handle right now. But we could do even more if we had more places to, for, for people that would take a little longer to transition out of homelessness. Because we really, 90 days is what we really want to keep people under. So I think it's, it's a matter, this is potentially scalable, but I think, I think steps beyond this are more important to scale.
That's a great answer. And, but as you know, council, we are still pursuing the opportunity to look for additional rooms.
Yeah.
Properties. But I think Aaron said it right, is, and this is great, but we're also recognizing we have this gap between this service and getting someone into a home. And we're, that transitional housing is an area we need to also work on too.
Yeah.
But this is great success, this takes a lot of effort.
Yeah.
You know, and, and it's worth it, right, if we can do it, but it still takes a lot of resources. So it's kind of this balance of where we want to serve those who want to be, you know, helped, and we can do that effectively. But we also need to work on the pipeline going forward.
Sure.
And, but this is key because not only is it successful in helping people get off the streets, but it's necessary for us in order to enforce the laws of trespass and dealing with the homeless. We don't have these rooms, we can't enforce, so it's a critical step.
Thank you. Councilmember Summers.
I just, maybe you can touch a little bit more on how we're defining success as far as these contacts. You have 1,343 contacts, 70.77 days is the average number, but that's not necessarily success, pushing them off the books. So how do we see success? Is it full employment? Is it, do we stop at medical, but get them into housing? How are you defining that?
That's a great question, Councilmember Summers. So transitioning them to a, basically housing that's fit for human habitation. So if they get transit, if they get negatively exited to the street or to jail or anything like that, then that's not, that's a negative exit. So a positive exit is them going into a programming, whether it be rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing vouchers, self-reliance. So it depends, there's a different metric for everybody. But a positive exit means somebody leaving our program into a program that meets their needs. Some people, particularly with our elder population, end up in care facilities. We've had many people that have high medical needs, and so a positive exit for them was getting into a certified nursing facility or hospice, in some cases. We've had some people that were that ill. So a positive exit.
Well, just as an example, you mentioned a 62, the population of 62-year-olds has increased in homelessness, but a 62-year-old who's worked would be eligible for early social security.
Indeed.
Who may not know that.
Yeah, what we're finding though, is many of our people that are getting social security are getting $1,100, $1,200 a month, and that's not the rent. And so they, and so they can't even eat. And so we're, we're working on subsidies to get them housed in different programming. And so that's what a positive exit, that's a great question, I should have answered that sooner.
Okay, and do we, do we, as a, let's see, are we tracking the recidivism in this program and success?
Yes, yeah, it's all tracked in that, that data portal, returns to the programming, returns to homelessness.
What if they move on to Albuquerque?
Then we wouldn't know.
We wouldn't know, so they kind of disappear at that point.
In Arizona, in HMI-S in Arizona, we would absolutely have that captured.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spillsbury.
I, I love this program and I'm totally in support of it, and I think it's incredible. And I love that you treat every person as an individual, because every one of their stories is completely different. So there's not a one answer fits all here, and I love that you guys focus on that. I was curious if there is any data of like, how much money have we put into this program divided by how many clients we've served? And how much the average amount is that it costs? Like, are we, I'm sure we're tracking all of that.
We could get that for, I don't think we're ready to show these, yeah, we obviously know how much we spent at the hotel, we've got police officers there, we've got all the other services there.
I would just be curious, I mean, it's, it really is an incredible rate, so it's working. And so I'd just be curious how much it's costing to do it.
We can put that together.
It'd be interesting, the ballpark numbers I put together, it's cheaper than keeping people homeless on the street.
Absolutely.
But you can see the finite numbers.
We can, we can pull that together.
Right, and I, I think people forget that a lot of how much it costs when there's, you know, all these.
Calls for service, assaults, jail time, I mean, whatever, all the different things that go into that, so.
Yeah, so, so my question's not to, you know, say that this isn't worth it, but I would just be curious to see what it is, so.
Excellent question.
All right.
I think we can, a couple more slides, right?
Yeah, so we do just have a couple more slides. And we wanted to give you a brief update on enhanced resources. So we've been meeting with the Downtown Mesa Association and making sure that the navigators that are dedicated downtown, this would include the library navigator as well, that we are supporting that area in making sure those navigators are consistently there, they're very visible, and everyone knows how to reach out to them. So we've enhanced those pieces and really also made sure the navigators are working closely with, for example, the DMA cleanup team and our community action officer in that area. So each of them separately, we're talking about encountering encampments and how they each separately deal with that. They now are collectively working together and informing each other if they've come upon an encampment or a homelessness issue, sharing that and working together to address the issue. So the community action officer is taking the navigator with him, and she's able to engage that person in services if needed. And the cleanup team has been trained by Erin on just best practices for engaging with the homeless community. So just continuing to enhance those resources and make sure the service model is working. We've also enhanced the dedicated line that is supportive of first responders. So for our police, fire, and park rangers, we have the Off the Streets hotline, so they can call when they're out in the field and they have someone willing to receive services. The call now goes directly to the Off the Streets staff at the hotel, rather than a call center with CBI where it previously was housed. And so we're hoping this provides a better response in the long term. We continue to work with CBI to make sure that they are providing that quality service. And then they actually take a navigator out to meet that officer in the field and provide services to that individual. So this is part of that enforcement piece that Mr. Brady was speaking about. If there's enforcing urban camping, then we can provide a bed at Off the Streets and provide services in order to be able to enforce. The last resource on here, I'm going to hand over to Deanna, because she's been working hard on this exciting update.
Hi, so the Mesa Homeless Resource Line is a line that provides assistance for people experiencing homelessness, specifically in Mesa. This line is managed during our business hours, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. And we do have a voicemail set up that provides our direct website and the directive to meet with a navigator at Positacristal. This number is available currently on our website, and our website does provide Mesa resources and chatbot that will respond to those common questions regarding homelessness. Although this line has not been publicized yet, we have been receiving calls. And the type of calls that we're currently getting are people that want to donate items, seeking resources such as employment, volunteer opportunities, and then more specifically, people that are either at risk of or currently experiencing homelessness. And a fun fact about those calls is that several of them are currently employed, yet they can't find affordable housing. And lastly, all these calls and voicemails are currently being tracked so that we can learn more about the needs of our community.
So this line is really, as Deanna and I really dig deeper into our community partners and what they can offer, we are making sure that this is a very localized response and that people are connected to a resource when they call. This is paired with that Off the Streets line. So we have the 24/7 response that our first responders can utilize. And then this is kind of the, the lower level service for that. But really providing, she's already connected several families to services, she can connect with our hotel. If it's a vulnerable, a vulnerable population, we've had several women with children calling to say, I don't have a place to live, I'm living in a park or in my car. So it is really connecting directly to our Off the Streets program. And then our, our other best resources locally that we know of to refer people to.
So this line is also being used, it sounds like, for people who are wanting to help in this area, donate, volunteer, or concerns about homeless or something. So this is a number we could give out to people who want to help or who are experiencing.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Spillsbury.
Councilmember Duff.
Could we post this number on the signs that we're putting up? I know there's a pilot program that went on, and Councilmember Freeman's about.
Councilmember Duff, you're talking about the panhandling signs. So we're working on enhancing that resource and having that be a fluid response on the signs. This line, I think we would promote in other ways most likely, but we can look into, we can look into that as well, adding it to the signs. We are, we would be, we can add more signs and we can recreate the, the design for that and consider that.
To reach people who are on the streets, who don't know where to go, how, whatever.
Yes.
It would be an option for them to have a start.
Yes, that's great feedback.
Instead of waiting for someone to go to them.
It's a more productive call than 211. And so it gives, because normally it's just a phone bot that you can't get any services. So it's just, we're trying to do a local response.
Perfect. Councilmember Summers, we have more, what more slides? Yeah, okay.
Okay, our last slide here is additional solutions in progress. So we are working on some new summer heat relief programming to serve the homeless population during those hotter months. And a long-term sustainability for the Off the Streets hotels was mentioned earlier. We don't have a good update on that process right now, but we'll certainly bring that back to you when we do have an update. One other thing is the feasibility study for transitional housing to be added at East Valley Men's Center. And with that, we are open for additional questions.
Additional question, Councilmember Summers.
So this, this is an important program, getting folks off the street. But to be successful, it takes partnerships, and we have a lot of partnerships through our, our nonprofits. But the state is an important partner too. Right, so Mr. Brady remembers, we've had some significant cuts back in '06 through '08 during the recession to things like behavioral health care, all sorts of services that we rely on there. We've also seen some issues, obviously some financial issues with shelters who, that could no longer be used for shelters because they didn't have fire sprinklers. Right, it, they were a violation of fire code, one down by the Capitol, a woman's shelter had to close for the very same reason, because it can be protected. We have to have financing to help put those systems in. So what has, is there anything that the state is looking at currently that would help provide better funding or new programs for behavioral health, drug abuse, shelter, shelter improvements, those, those kind of things?
Deanna, you got anything? Our generous legislature has provided any resources for our homeless.
As our generous legislature, yeah, to, to help with this, it's a regional problem and sometimes takes regional solutions.
Yeah, good morning, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Summers, thanks for the question. So I can tell you kind of generally what's happening right now, I don't know that there's specifics along the lines of your question exactly. I think the good news is there really is finally a recognition that the, from both parties, that the state can and needs to be playing a bigger role in this. And the, the question comes down to what do they do and how do they do it? We are, we're, we're actually really optimistic about One Avenue right now, which is an effort to get a significant amount of funding, both to the state and then distributed to localities, nonprofits, even landlords through an appropriation. So right now, and everything that I say right now is likely to change next week, and then it'll change again the week after that, so just know that, we're in for a very long session. But right now, what's on the table is about $150 million or so. That would get, again, distributed to the state to start a pilot program to look at housing. I mean, all the things that, that our folks and you guys have been talking about right now, the state is saying, hey, we can do that too, we should do that too. So they're going to look at housing, they're going to look at employment opportunities, they're going to look at maybe rehabilitation and that sort of thing. It's just still being decided how that's going to be distributed exactly, and then who gets to play and for how long and that sort of thing. Now, one, one other thing I want to say is, one of the efforts has a very enforcement-first focus, which is not really what we've been hearing today. And so we're less interested in that and are really supporting and involving this idea of support and resources first. And again, I'm optimistic today right now that that effort is going to find a place somewhere somehow, I just don't know exactly what that'll look like.
Yeah, when you look at. Yeah, when you look at some of the numbers that we have here, the number of folks who actually went to prison is a very small number compared to things like drug and alcohol abuse, behavioral health particularly, and which is the cart, which is a horse, right? Some people take illicit drugs like opiates because they have a behavioral health problem that they are not able to treat themselves because they don't have support mechanisms and they don't have access to healthcare. So solving these problems can be very complicated, unfortunately does take money. So getting the support of the state needs to be a top priority.
And Vice Mayor and Councilmember Summers, absolutely. And like I said, we're super encouraged and involved in that effort. One thing I'll point out specifically, that's a shout out to Mesa, actually. So in one of these bills that we're working, there is a section that would distribute money to municipalities that have a community court and it's based on our model. And it's a recognition of what you just said, that again, the enforcement side of things is not necessarily the right approach, you want to get the services. Yes, they're going to maybe be brought into the system, but when they're in, let's get them out of it as fast as possible.
Successfully.
Successfully, exactly. So that's in there today, we could take advantage of it, but other communities would be able to as well.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Perfect. Any other questions? Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate this presentation, you know, myself and all the council, we've participated in the point-in-time counts and so we see firsthand how it affects, you know, our city, our neighborhoods, and we listen to our constituents and then how it affects our police officers. You know, I just want to give a big shout out to all of the teams that reach out to homeless every day. We have our park rangers, we have our patrol officers, we have CBI, we have all the nonprofit, we have our city staff, I mean, we have all these layers. And I think they're working very collaborative and we're leveraging the system the best we can. I hate to call it a system, but you know, what we're trying to do is help people resolve their cycle homelessness and help them become self-reliant. I mean, that's our ultimate goal. And some people cannot focus on that because some will be service-resistant to whatever our efforts are be, and that will be the ones that we'll have to, have to work with. First of all, I'm, again, our community action officers, I'm thankful for the upgrade. They have two now as our community action officers in each of our district. That's important for their personal safety and allows them to work as a team and be more effective. So I appreciate that happening. So, and CBI and everything that's done, been done so far, I feel like there's progress in our community, in our city. And we're modeling, I mean, other agencies and cities look to Mesa to what we're doing, especially in our community court, as well as how we function. So I'm, as far as the state side, I hope that materializes, our legislators realize that they can help municipalities in the cycle of homelessness. So with that, thank you very much for everything that everybody does.
Councilmembers. I got emotional while Mark was talking, sorry. Good.
I never had that effect though.
Oh, sorry. Someone else should have gone first. No, I just, I echo everything. I know your name, that Mark, that Mark just said, I just, it's just really incredible to think about all the work that all of you are doing to help these people that need it. And I really appreciate that. Anyways, couple of my questions. There was data on domestic violence and I wondered, do you guys have, do you collect data on kids coming in and out of foster care or people coming, you know, aging out of foster care and sex trafficking? Are those two places that you have data on?
We do, it's not present in today's presentation. The number for foster kids was lower than we expected, but the human trafficking stuff, we do have some capture on that.
Okay, if I could get that, that would be great. And then on the additional solutions in progress, the feasibility study for transitional housing, is that, would that be transitional housing in general or is that just more detailed for like the East Valley Men's Shelter?
Yeah, Councilmember Spillsbury, Vice Mayor, that is specifically for building on the East Valley Men's Center site.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. So do we have, we've talked previously that transitional housing and beefing that area would be something that would be really helpful with this program. So I didn't see that specifically on here. Do we have stuff in the works or what we're thinking moving forward?
Yeah, we can come back with you. We've identified that as an opportunity in the ARPA funds. And so that's why the feasibility, sorry, the feasibility study is being conducted today so we can determine how many units, what that looks like. And so we're working with New Leaf on that and we will be bringing that back to council at some point.
So, so once we know what that particular project would look like, then we would maybe look at what other ones would need to be done.
It's kind of becomes a resource issue, but certainly those are opportunities. And I think it's opportunities as we look at, you know, going for, we have unique opportunities right now with the infusion of ARPA dollars, right? And that's kind of the focus right now is how to use those to address the transitional housing. But ongoing, we need to have those conversations with all nonprofits or other nonprofits who have the capacity to deliver transitional housing. And that, it's difficult because there's such a demand on CDVG and home dollars, but what we're saying to council is that's just like kind of at a critical point and it's hard to pick between everything that's so important in social services, but right now that is an area that we think will make a big difference. And so that's why we're working, we went through a process, New Leaf identified quickly, they have the land, they have individuals who are already in the emergency kind of congregate setting and those who are ready to progress and move forward, the transitional housing would be a natural opportunity while they're there and creating that encouragement incentive for them to progress and make, and move forward and get them into the transitional housing.
Okay, I just, since we talked about this gap that's potentially there for women, you know, single women and families, so it, so how does that work? Like, do the nonprofits that are in this space, that are working in this space, do they see those gaps and they, they would be the ones to come up with the ideas or does the city say, hey, we see this gap, what nonprofit out there could help us?
So it kind of works both ways.
Both ways, okay.
But oftentimes when we've gone through the early process of identifying the priorities for the city, for CDVG funding and home funding, we talk about, you know, we know there's a lot of great needs out there, but right now the city's looking at these issues and that's kind of one of them. So when you see the proposals coming in from the nonprofits, while there's a lot of needs out there, we often say, you know, is it more effective to say, we need to solve for this, this couple of rounds? Or do we just try to spread it and do a little bit for everybody? And so far, the strategy has been over the last four or five years is we say, no, we need to put a significant amount of resources in this to make a difference, right? Because to move the needle and that transitional housing has now become kind of our, I guess, a topic of specific, you know, it was emergency housing and so we could have capacity to enforce. Now we're telling you it's, and I think we've had this conversation, it's transitional housing.
And the, I know there's, there's issues with, with the hotel we were looking at, but if, if we were to purchase the hotel and move forward with that plan, it wasn't in addition to these rooms, that was just to replace these rooms, right? So we're not, we're not expanding the off-the-street program as far as the numbers.
I'm not going to say.
You don't know, okay.
I would say, we have to be careful, right, to stretch our resources to support what we're talking about.
Right.
The Windermere's been such a great partner.
Yeah.
And having those capacities, I hate to say we're not, we're just going to, you know.
Okay.
Because the demand's there, right? But we also, but we also have done an amazing job, you're looking at individuals here and others who've been able to make that a great experience and very productive. You know, the question is how, by adding more rooms and more, you know, can we continue that?
Right. And with how many resources.
But it's time the question was, well, if this is working so well, why don't we just keep replicating it? And somewhere, we've got to figure out where that balance is between taking what we have and being successful and if we grow it, can we continue to have that same success, recognizing the intensity of resources that it takes? And we've been very fortunate, frankly, with the COVID and ARPA dollars to do that.
Right.
Those days, you know, those times will come to an end. And so we're moving forward and I'm just saying, let us evaluate that, right? We just don't, we just don't have a new hotel yet anyway. So until we do that, and the Wind, again, I just compliment, the Windermere has been an amazing partner for us in making that happen.
Right, okay. My last question is just, and I, I don't know exactly, so our big push for like getting mental health navigators and with the Solari and doing, when you call 911, you might get a mental health person before you'd get a fireman or a police officer, right? So how does that play into this homeless issue? Are those same calls going there, like, and I guess do we have data on that as far as the mental health side of it? How many, how much of that is being used with homeless?
We do, I don't know if we're ready to, do we have that data here? I don't know the, we can get, we can give you that report because I just, I know we're having those conversations today. You know, Solari was set up really as kind of a frontline service for PD, right?
Right, right.
But as I've met with Solari and we've talked about, there's a great opportunity for crossover, right? That we've got, was it two squads or two teams, I guess, in Mesa today? And we're watching to see how well that works to respond to the police department's needs. But frankly, that model creates a great opportunity if it's successful and they can staff it, that I've said, well, when you're not responding to PD, why don't you drive up and down country club and go visit every bus shelter?
Oh, wow.
But we're not there then, but that's, the idea is you could be, maybe you could end up having teams like that or just being, so it's not a police officer pulling up in a Tahoe, it's not even a park ranger, it's a.
Civilian.
Yeah, civilian, I forget what they're.
Clinician.
Clinician, pulling up and just saying, hey, I noticed you're here, and they have that conversation and do an assessment, they're not enforcing, they're just there to provide assistance. So it's a, it's down the road, but it's another way of to continue to try to address.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're getting national recognition for, for this program and it's been brought up at several conferences I've attended and stuff, so I think it's incredible and I think it is working. And so that was what my thought was, was how to tie that in with this issue so that, yeah, we don't have police officers showing up or scaring people or whatever. Not that you're scary. Okay, all right, I think that's all of my questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember go forth and Councilmember Summers.
I was just going to say a little bit along the lines, Julie, I have tried to educate myself in this space, being a new council member. I've, I just recently toured this week, the Child Crisis Center, and I've met with Mesa United Way. They have both talked about the gaps in service that they're seeing. So I think they do track their own, I don't know whether they get it from our data or national data or just live, living it, but they, they do try to address some of the gaps that they see and trends like that. I just had a question, could you explain a little bit more fully, what is a navigator?
Sorry, we just assume everybody knows.
I've heard it in a couple of different contexts since I've been here, but could you just give me a good.
We just kind of ran over the top of that one.
Brief on that.
Councilmember, go forth. We utilize through contracts, through, from COPA Health and from Community Bridges, we call them navigators because they're, they're kind of like a human GPS to help someone circumnavigate the bureaucracies it takes to get out of homelessness. Many of them are formerly homeless themselves, many of them are, have a peer connection. So their ability to connect with the population is really good and to build that rapport. And so they're experts in, in service connection and they can do it in a manner that is hard for a typical clinician or a police officer to get that. So we have these navigators that go out into the community, we have them at the library, we have them in downtown Mesa, and they go out and engage the population as well as Posse Crystal and try and get them to engage in services.
Are they a city employee?
No, they're contracted.
We contract, okay.
Through Community Bridges and COPA Health.
Okay, and how many are there? How many do we have and is it, you know, during the day, day hours?
Well, we, so again, as Erin said, we have them in a variety of different locations, library, downtown, courts.
Courts.
Where else?
As well as the.
What was the number, like 14? 13 or 14 of those?
As well as at the, at the Windermere.
Oh, right.
Off-the-streets program as well.
Yep, yep.
Okay. And then I just want to say thank you for your presentation, it was, it's very informative, a lot of good data. So thank you for all your work.
Councilmember Summers?
Just a couple of comments. One, on the ability to replicate this program, I think it's important that we work with other communities in the valley, not just replicate it here in Mesa, but replicate it outside. I just want to make it clear that that should be the goal. I don't want, we should be able to help our community members, but what I would prefer is that other communities do the same thing, that they have these resources and best practices to provide the resources for, for their citizens and not just move them to other communities that have them. So this should be a best practice for other communities. I also want to make sure that we work with PD and fire and our other partners in how we can defer more of these folks away because we need our police to police, we need our paramedics can provide outstanding medical services, but not really a healthcare service. We struggle sometimes where when we come into contact, as a first responder myself, I've been a paramedic over 30 years, the only option we have with these people are either jail or the emergency department and neither of those are good options because that's not where they're getting the help. So this goes back into working with the state and even some federal partners in the ability to take clients to the, directly into the help they need, the behavioral health, the substance abuse, alternative transport options for ambulance so they can get into the help because otherwise jail releases them or they go into the emergency room, they wait two hours, they plug our emergency rooms up and then they walk out without the help. So we need to think about those partners as well and how we support getting better options for our first responders. Thank you.
Just quickly, and Natalie's reminded me, and I'd be amiss if I didn't say this, please, as you see county supervisors, give them kudos, the county's been a great partner. They've provided a lot of resources for us to address even whether it was rental assistance, utility assistance, but also they're working with us and allocating some of their funds to help us with the transitional housing too. So they've been a great partner, so we shouldn't forget that. So the county, we appreciate the county's help.
Along, I would say, you know, the guys at work and the workforce.
Yep, oh yes, thank you for that too, yep, all that, right, yep.
So, all right, I think we don't have any questions, other questions on this? Thank you for the robust discussion, you know, this is a complex issue. I think even getting data that works, that you can tell a story is complicated to get, right, on this issue. So thank you for the effort and hopefully we can continue making progress, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, do you have anything, anything to share? Councilmember Summers?
Unfortunately, I was stuck in a sitting meeting all morning on Tuesday. However, an event that happened at Phoenix Mason Gateway Airport, Sky Bridge, finally broke ground on two industrial manufacturing facilities, buildings that are going to open. Sky Bridge, for those of you who don't remember, is focused on manufacturing and international trade, in particularly to, to Mexico right now, but we hope to expand that. So this is going to be huge for jobs in Mesa, being able to potentially produce things here, manufacture them here and export them. So it's a fantastic opportunity, it took a while, COVID slowed it down, but they finally broke ground.
Councilmember Spillsbury?
Yeah, I yesterday got to attend a couple of neat events. One of them was Banner Children's Hospital, the James M. Cox Foundation, which is the Foundation for Cox Communications, donated $5 million to Banner Children's Hospital to create a dedicated blood and cancer center at that children's, at the medical center there. And that was really neat, several of us were there. And then also yesterday afternoon, Councilmember Freeman and I attended a ribbon cutting at One Medical at Dana Park, their membership-based primary care practice partnering with Dignity Health, and they're on a mission to make getting quality care more accessible and affordable. And it is the most beautiful doctor's office I have ever seen. Wasn't it beautiful? Anyways, so that was fun yesterday afternoon. I can't not mention one more time the new exhibit at the IDEA Museum, Desert Roots. I got to see it when it wasn't quite finished, so then I went last week, saw it all finished. It is absolutely amazing, take your kids, your grandkids, actually you would just enjoy it yourself too. So go see that, lots of, lots of fun things down there. Art, different art projects, STEM activities, it's amazing. And then also this Saturday is, is I Love Mesa, which I'm sure someone will mention, but super excited about all of the fun things that are going to be going on that day. And that afternoon at the Amphitheater is the Alex Boyer Suicide Prevention Concert. There will be musical performances. There will be musical performances and also different booths and information on, with mental health professionals, behavioral health experts, and really provide just incredible resources to help with suicide prevention. And it's going to be a great concert, so from three to six on Saturday.
Spring training.
And spring training, you want me to say that to me? I'm going to be the one to talk about baseball. Spring training starts on Saturday, so a bunch of us are going to go do the first, well, the mayor's going to do the first pitch at noon-ish, well, one o'clock, I guess, is what time the game starts, at the Cubs game on Saturday. That'll be fun.
Oh, I...
Councilmember Donald?
I know, I know. I did what? Lots of things. I attended on Zoom a National League of Cities Environment, Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee meeting, and learned the EPA has quite a few new technical assistance grants for drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater. I'll be passing those along. There's a lot of things helping with the EPA and grants that cities can use. I attended a Save the Family fundraiser, which is a fantastic organization that is taking families that we've talked about in homelessness and being able to get them housed and on their way to a good life. I really love that organization. I dropped in on a book signing event and talk by Jeff Speck of Walkable Cities last week at the Cul-de-sac in Tempe, and I'm in love with his work and, and want to see us do more in making our city more walkable. Councilmember Spilsbury and I attended our Yes in My Backyard Housing Symposium yesterday with Home Arizona and ASU, and housing is definitely needed for economic development and to reduce our rate of homelessness is directly related. Yesterday, I attended a new business, New for Mesa, they're out of Utah, actually, is an OCD and anxiety treatment center. This is very, what are they, I'm trying to think of the word, they just work through the issues with the people, right, where they are as far as, you know, the, if they have certain fears or whatever there. So it is tremendous, a great organization and very attractive office, an extension between the 60 and baseline. And then the I Love Mesa, what we have in day in downtown Mesa, I will be at the tomorrow Mesa booth in the afternoon and talking about our general plan update and our vision. So if you have ideas of how you would like to see the city differently or improve, please give your input at the booth. The booth will be there all day. I think the, I Love Mesa is 11 to 8. Looks like I will be in the booth around 3 o'clock, so come see me. Thank you.
Councilmember Goldsforth?
So last Friday, I attended a ribbon cutting for Boeing, Boeing's, another fabrication fulfillment center, which was, they have partnered with Copa Health in providing individuals with disabilities employment. It's a fantastic program. It was great to see, there were several individuals in there working on tasks in preparation for the eventual fabrication. So it's a great program, and they're doing a great job over there at Boeing in partnering with Copa Health. I went to a party in the park at Red Mountain Ranch, their HOA held on Saturday. That was fun to interact with some of the residents over there, and they've remodeled that park a little bit since the addition of the Red Rock Reserve, Blanford neighborhood, so they've expanded it. It's really nice. I also went to Falcon Warbirds Breakfast that they hosted on Saturday. It's always fun to go out to Falcon Field, it was beautiful, and see the airplanes and all the residents really enjoying the, the airport and everything that happens over there. Attended on Tuesday, a community engagement residence guide to taking care of your neighborhood. The community engagement team did a fantastic job of going through Mesa Now app and, and several different areas to inform residents about where they can find resources and where they can get their questions answered and how to be a better neighbor. So that was great. They had a really nice turnout, I thought, so. And went to the Banner Cox event yesterday, that was great, too, as Julie already mentioned. So I think that's about it.
Perfect. All right. Okay. I'll give a shout out to Dr. Ranch, HOA, celebrated, they're celebrating 50 years this year of being a HOA here in Mesa, and we had our annual breakfast, so thank you all city departments that were able to attend and provide information on a variety of issues that they had questions for. So thank you. And just to shout out the spring training, I think this is the first full season over the last several years that we'll have a full spring training season. So those that love the Cubs and the A's, they'll be starting this weekend, look forward to that piece. And then a couple of that, you know, the valley is also hosting the World Baseball Classic after spring training. So it's, it's, if you're a baseball lover, there'll be a lot of games and a lot of, lot of activity here in the valley for you to attend. So hopefully you attend our Mesa restaurants and small businesses here as you go to your spring training games. So item number four, Ms. Brady, schedule for future meetings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So just a reminder, review the agenda, so we'll be meeting on Monday, February 27th. We have an early start date, we have a couple items for the study session, so if you'll note that difference in time for that start date, we're going to start, I think, or start time, sorry, we'll start a little bit earlier on Monday. And then just again, I Love Mesa, we're excited to bring you back again for the second year. It starts at 8:00 AM with the farmer's market and goes to 9:00 PM, concludes with fireworks.
Oh, wow.
So a lot of concerts going on downtown, a lot of other activities. So we'll have free admission to the IDEA Museum, the Natural History Museums. We encourage people to come down with families, very family-friendly event, so there'll be a lot of activities, so you can come in the morning and buy your farmer's market goods and then come back in the evening and watch the fireworks go off. So that'll be fun. And then you've covered spring training, we're looking forward to a great year. We're already having people show up at practices, so this is an exciting year. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. We do have one other item on our agenda, is item number 5A, to convene an executive session regarding the close of the litigation, is there a motion to go into executive session? Moved by Councilmember Spilsbury, seconded by Councilmember Summers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, we'll now go into executive session. Thank you.